Where's he interning from?
High school.
Okay. I gather in the historic first meeting in our New City Hall, like to welcome everybody in please silence or put your cellphones on vibrate to limit interruptions. Let's move on to item number one and that is the roll call.
Burlingame?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pitner?
Here.
Padagula?
Ross?
Here.
Moving on to item number two today, joining us to lead us in the pledge of allegiance is former Minot city councilman Bob Wetzler. Bob is also a retired veteran of our military. So Bob, thank you for your service and if you wouldn't mind, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Bob, thank you for your service to our country and thank you for your service to the city of Minot during your time. Thank you Bob. Now joining us for this occasion is to bless the council chambers, joining us is Father Adam Mouse from Our Lady of Grace Church. Father, it is all yours.
Mayor and council members, thank you for asking and for the privilege and opportunity to invoke the name of the Lord upon all those who serve in public office and civil authority and bless these new chambers. So let us call on the name of the Lord. O God, who arranges all things in wondrous order and govern in marvelous ways, look with favor on the assembled for whom we now pray, and mercifully pour out upon them the spirit of your wisdom, that they may always decide everything for the well-being and peace of all, and may never turn aside from your will. You, Lord our God, all things have their beginning, continuation, and end. May your blessing come down and rest upon these chambers. Grace us with your saving presence. Aid us with your constant help and let us glorify you now and forever. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you Father.
Welcome.
Now let's move on to item number three and that is the mayor's report. And it was kind of a busy couple of weeks. I had a couple of job shadows which were here for the last council meeting and we had some workforce development meetings with Job Corps, had one-on-ones with the city manager, city attorney, a closing, and then with Councilman Burlingame, we had the committee on the childcare, regional project sentinel discussion with Cheyenne Wyoming and Great Falls Montana, meeting with the Husfest, and a town hall meeting at the Air Force Base last week along with business after hours and the dedication of that icon on North Hill, the Discovery Center. And then I also attended the Air and Space Force Association Commander Awards since our last meeting. I also want to bring the council up to date on the process for renewing city manager's contract coming up very quickly. Just a quick timetable tomorrow, Lisa Junt, HR Director, will be sending out evaluations for us to go through. The deadline for those to come back is May 16th, which will be two weeks from tomorrow and then potentially move into an executive session before the next council meeting to discuss and get some advice from our attorney on moving forward. So that is all I have for my report. Are there any questions? If not, we can move on to item number four on the agenda and that is the city manager's report.
Good evening Mayor and Council. As always, within the council packet that was prepared for you and available on the website is the city manager's report. There's not a whole lot for me personally in there because the last couple of weeks have been spent moot transition from the old city hall to this one. I think we're excited and glad to be on this side of the move and settling in and we're grateful to have the public here enjoying the building. I'd like to remind the council and the public that next Thursday, May 11th, will be our dedicatori activities here at city hall and we invite all of the public to come and participate in that beginning at 5:00 PM. Well, actually, I think we'll have the dedication at 4:30 and then we have the open house at 5:00 in partnership with the Minot Area Chamber and Economic Development Corporation. So we invite everybody to come to that. Also look forward to later this week going to Fargo with many community representatives to hear the North Dakota State University Architecture students present their concepts on downtown Minot and what they've been working on this semester similar to what they did.
Midora.
Midora, similar to Midora. So we're looking forward to that this Wednesday as well. So with that, I'd stand for any questions from the council if there's anything with regards to the city manager report.
Any questions for Harold?
Scott?
More of a statement, I guess. Harold and to the team, I think that, you know, obviously moving offices is a lot of work and can cause a lot of stress and it's a beautiful building and you guys appear to be at least mostly moved in, so way to go and congratulations on everything. So thank you for all your dedication.
Anything else? If not, let's move on to item five on the agenda. That is the city attorney's report.
Mayor, members of the council, I submitted a written report and I stand for questions at this time if there are any.
Are there any questions? If not, we can move on to the consent, item number six on the agenda and that's consent items. We have 34 items on the consent agenda. I have been asked to pull item 6.2.4 for further discussion. Are there any other items to be pulled from the consent agenda? Any other items? If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Move on, remaining items.
We've got a motion by Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Pitner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to the remaining item 6.2.4 and that was asked to be pulled by Lisa.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a motion and then I would have an explanation if I receive a second, but my motion would be to deny the upgraded or updated wording that we passed on first reading two weeks ago.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Okay, Lisa?
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. So during the past two weeks, I know I personally have heard from a number of people and I believe that most of us up here have as well. There's been a lot of concern related to the upgrading wording on the Human Relations Committee ordinance. We know that the ordinance has been in place since about 1976, has not been active for many, many years. Are you able to hear me now?
Is your sound system turned on? Because it's not getting back your...
We'll check on that.
Okay. Just want to pause for a minute then?
Yeah, let's just pause.
He said to speak in full voice. Okay, I will do that. Hopefully you're able to hear me now. All right, so in response to the number of people that have had concerns, I sense that we are not prepared to change the wording on the ordinance. By denying it tonight, the ordinance will still stand, but the upgraded wording would not go into place. And my recommendation would be that we look at it more thoroughly, we include some more people in the conversation, so that if there are upgraded wording or a different sense to the ordinance that is necessary, that we would do it the right way. I think right now, I personally feel rushed and just in reading the emails and taking the phone calls from a number of people, I believe that they feel the same way.
Any other comments? Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I would, I guess I feel some of the same way that Alderman, Olson, for us, if, you know, if I were to vote for this, I would, I would want some changes to some of the wording and so forth. So I think getting it right is important, making sure that we all understand and the citizens all understand what the intent is of this, whether it be what we're seeing in front of us now or something that would come from it down the road. So I, you know, I think I'm in support of Lisa's motion and I'm also conscious of the fact that we're short one member tonight and I think if we delay this, it'd be nice if we were all here when this gets finalized.
Okay. Any other comments?
Scott? So I will be voting against this motion mostly because I did have an understanding of what I was voting for when I got this and, you know, the Human Relations Commission exists for the purpose of creating an opportunity for people who feel like they've been discriminated against to have a public forum. And that's all it is. And I, in talking to different people about this, I kept going back to a quote and I never in a million years thought I'd be quoting Mr. Rogers at a city council meeting, but I'm going to do it. Because it says that anything that is human is mentionable and anything that is mentionable can be more manageable. When we can talk about our feelings, they become less overwhelming, less upsetting, and less scary. The people who that we trust are important to talk to can help us know that we are not alone. If we're going to create a Minot that is truly inclusive, a Minot that is a place that people want to live in, a place that people want to come to, the least we can do is create an opportunity to create conversation. And that's what this is about. This is about creating conversation and giving people an opportunity to come together. Far too often in today's world, we live in these echo chambers where we only talk to and listen to people who are exactly like us. Social media, all the marketing campaigns in the world and everything else feeds us the same stuff that we're used to. And sometimes when we create conversations, it can make us feel uncomfortable. Sometimes when we create conversation, we can hear things that we absolutely disagree with. But just hearing conversation, just creating human relations doesn't cause, doesn't, isn't a bad thing and it's better than the alternative, which is that we create an environment which Minot doesn't feel welcoming and accepting. So I'll be voting no on this today.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Lisa.
So in response to Alderman Burlingame, I want to clarify for everyone that's voting and everyone that's in the audience, this does not do away with the ordinance. The ordinance stands. The only part of my motion that I am making is to not accept the upgraded verbiage that we passed at the last meeting. This ordinance will still stand. It still gives the mayor the opportunity to stand up this committee. It does not take away anyone's rights to have their voice be heard. All it does is deny the upgraded verbiage that we accepted two weeks ago.
Carrie?
I'd like to remind the audience what the upgraded language was. It was adding categories of protection for people like me, who are queer, disabled, for people who may have a criminal conviction, people who may be receiving social assistance for veterans. That's the radical change. And it's not protections, it's just simply saying, let's have this committee talk about these people that live in our community that may have qualities that need to be talked about. And Mr. Mayor, I would implore you to open this up to the public. You've had the chance to hear from the voices that Lisa talks about, there's other voices and I think they deserve to be heard.
Any other comments? If not, I will open it up for public comments for 15 minutes. So if you want to speak either for or against the ordinance language, now is your time to approach the podium.
Can you put the ordinance up on the screen?
We'll check.
Well, Derek switched my screen, the old one and the new one like barked out together. Well, I mean, that's what, it shows the old and then the new together in one document.
I mean, because we're having problems out here hearing what is being said.
Okay. We're seeing if we can do that.
Am I supposed to talk now?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. I, I'm just going by the paper here and what bothered me or brought up my attention was to promote the acceptance and respect for diversity through education programs and activities to discourage all forms of discrimination. Well, I don't understand that. I mean, how, that's very loose. You know, to me that, what does that mean? Another thing, what was it here? I guess that was that other thing, that was something else. So that's what I want to know is, what does this all mean? You know, these words are good, but what does that mean for us that are out here and are reading the paper?
Hello, city council and mayor. My name is Wendy Bagley. I have been following this transgender movement for about the last five, six years. I've been seeing how it has affected multiple communities across the United States. I was active in the legislative session and particularly in our library board meetings recently when I and several other community members started noticing books appearing in the Minot Public Library for children that we believe were very over-sexualized and not appropriate for children. We believe that this particular action right now, being brought up on the agenda, is a direct reaction to efforts of people in North Dakota and particularly in Minot to make a stand and say no. These are, we do want to be a welcoming and open community, but an analogy came to mind. Healthy individuals and healthy cells, think of biology in our bodies, do not let in everything. Healthy individuals, healthy communities do have lines and do have boundaries to say certain things are appropriate in our community and some things are not. What I have seen across the country is a radical gender theory ideology that has essentially gone step by step to, through great sounding words, to then force individuals, force businesses, force communities to accept lifestyles and policies that the vast majority of the people in the community would not appreciate, that do not believe in. And I'm concerned that this is the trajectory that we're on. I do appreciate Alderman Olson's suggestion to hold off on this and Alderman's dancers' suggestion that we need to look at this a little bit more. I do think it is important to escape the information silos that we often tend to get in and I do. I try to look at things that I see on the other side and I don't believe that every person who is perhaps transgender, queer, whatever, are out to get, you know, overturn our government. I don't believe that. I actually appreciate a lot that Ms. Evans, Alderman Woman Evans, has done to support our library board, to support the excellent programming that's been there. The services that they provide to our community are amazing. But at the same time, we need to have healthy boundaries. And we are starting to see more and more in our communities, the push towards mutilation of children, over-sexualization of children, and, you know, acceptance of transgender people in sports that actually hurts the people that Title IX was originally designed to help. This is a larger community discussion. I would love to have maybe some town hall meetings on it, but to resurrect a decades-old, a decades-old ordinance, try to make some changes, and especially push it through while a lot of us are focused on the legislative session. And then to try to hide it in the consent agenda, I'm grateful, Mayor Ross, that you took it out of the consent agenda, but to me, the fact that it was hidden in there to be passed just with, you know, eight, 10 other things, that was absolutely inappropriate. So I'm grateful you took that out. So those are my comments. Thank you for this opportunity to share my thoughts.
Thank you, just a minute, just, hang on Carrie, hang on. Just to clarify that that's the process for consent agenda for the second reading of ordinances is to put them in the consent. It wasn't hidden at all.
Oh, thank you.
First reading two weeks ago, totally on the agenda as an action item and as our municipal code and our century code state, then if it passes first reading, it goes into second reading under consent agenda.
I apologize, I did not know that. So thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Denise Dykman. I live here in Minot. I oppose this motion. I am a Lutheran here in this town and I believe that all of our voices and citizens deserve to be heard and welcomed and valued. It's important to value the freedom of all of our citizens and let them pursue life, liberty, and happiness, whatever that is, okay? Not just the majority's view, but everyone's view, okay? I've been working on DEIA issues, that stands for diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility for several years as part of my work on church councils and as part of my work professionally. This is important for businesses to be able to attract a more diverse workforce. More diversity equals more ideas, good ideas, right? Diversity in language, diversity in culture, diversity in ability. These things are valuable. This is what makes America great, all of our diversity and backgrounds and ideas. Learning more about each other is key to achieving acceptance and appreciation for people and appreciation for those ideas that are different than yours. Thank you for listening to me and I hope you will go forward with the language as proposed. I have also applied to be on the committee and I hope you'll consider my application. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Hints. Our family moved here in 1995. Both of my kids were born here. In the last year, they are both now in their twenties and in the last year, they have both moved away from the state of North Dakota because they no longer feel welcome here. They both identify with LGBTQ community and if you don't think that there's discrimination and hate in North Dakota, you haven't opened your newspaper in a while. I hope you vote for this. This is a really important thing to keep our young people here in North Dakota. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Devon Matts, I live here in Minot. Council members, Mayor Ross, I don't have anything written down to say about this. I have four kids here in Minot and I'm in total support of this Human Relations Committee and the wording that it stands that you passed last time. I can't believe we're even having this conversation. Talking about mutilating kids genitalia? I mean, come on, like, let's get real. Like, that's not what's happening, right? This is not what that's about at all. So people that actually believe that, turn off the TV, go outside. It's really disheartening for me and my generation to grow up in a town like this. It really is, it's very difficult. And now I'm raising my four kids up in this and I tell them every day, this is not how most people are. I hope that you do something about this because this is very minor. Don't let hatred of gay people, for some reason, I have no idea, don't let that stop you from doing something like this. The Human Relations Committee, like, what, this is insane. All right, thank you.
Hi, I'm Levi Pierpont. I'm in the military, that's why I live here, but of course, nothing I say, you know, comes from that background, it's just my opinion. I wanted to note that this ordinance is in place now and has not been updated since 1976. So it's not that it's being resurrected, as one person mentioned, it's... It's, it's in place. It's just being updated with some wording. I wanted to mention that the additions include religious beliefs, pregnancy status, disability, military status. Nobody that's spoken so far is saying, I don't think that disability should be included. Nobody's spoken so far and said, I don't think military status should be included or protected. Nobody's spoken so far about pregnancy status. How would you feel if you or your child was part of that group that's the only one being spoken about? And I also support these additions, especially disability, right? I don't know if you remember, Mayor, I, I introduced you to my friend Bonnie, who lives here and is deaf. That's so important, including people, making sure that if somebody has difficulty hearing, people speak up for them, or there's an interpreter present. Those things, that's just basic inclusion. And the truth is, it's no different for trans people. It's no different for gay people. It's just a different type of, of approaching life and being a person. It's not a deviant lifestyle. It's the person that you are. For many people, that's, that's how we feel. It's just the people that we are. It's not super related, but since somebody brought it up, if you think that people are having gender reassignment surgeries on the regular before they're 18 years old, then you need to get out of your bubble and meet trans people, because that's not what's happening. If you take your 13-year-old to a therapist that specializes in gender-affirming care, that therapist will tell you, experiment with dressing the way you want to. Experiment with new pronouns, maybe a new name. Just, just see what feels good. They are not going to tell your child that they should have a surgery the next day. It's ridiculous. It's a panic. It's a moral panic around people like me, around my brothers and sisters and siblings in the trans community. And it hurts so much to live in a place like this where there's such a focus on us. Why us? Every time I walk outside, I have to think about the people that might see me, people that might see me with my partner. My guess is you don't have to think about that. And I really know that, that people that spoke earlier, the very people that said, you know, the things about mutilation, whatever, I know that those people think that they're doing the right thing. I know that, because I grew up in, in American evangelicalism. My dad is a pastor. I know that those people are hardset on believing that they're doing the right thing, that they're helping the community. And I appreciate that they're involved. I appreciate that they want to be active and passionate about what they believe in, because I think that's important, and I am too. But I just want those people to be more open to having conversations. This state is not yours to turn into a theocracy. It's not. I don't want this to be a state where people go, you know what? I want to move into a state that feels like 30 years ago. I'm going to move to Minot, North Dakota. That's embarrassing. I want us to be in the future. And to that person who spoke up, I am going to move. And I'm going to be pretty happy when I do. And that's sad, because I have people that I love here. I have community that I really care for here, right? But it's just tough. So please, please, just think about what it feels like to be somebody like me, to be a trans person that maybe just doesn't really pass as the gender that they're going for yet. When people see them, they know, yep, you're trans. It's really hard. It's really hard for people like that to just walk around, to just have a job. They get things said to them by people like the people in this room every day. So I, I definitely am in favor of this new language. The truth is, this ordinance is going to need a new language at some point, and it's going to get it. And I think it's silly to act like this is the one thing that we shouldn't include. This is 2023, people. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. Thank you for giving us this time to talk, Mayor. Thank you, Council, as well, for the work. I know that a lot of you have put into this. My name is Deborah Huffarth. I am a citizen of Minot. I live at 1320 11th Street Southwest. I'm not sure that everyone, I want to just be clear that I am an actual citizen in this, in this city. I do oppose this motion, and I want you to pass this motion for a variety of reasons. I do want to first be sure that the City Council has been complying with Chapter 4404, which is the open record laws of this case. I do, I did note that Ms. Olson said conversations that she's been had made her feel to believe that this motion would be acceptable. And I want to make sure that there have been no backdoor meetings among certain councilmen to make sure that that was the case today. Having said that, I am saddened to see the movement of censorship and hatred that has dominated. The North Dakota Legislature has now come to roost here at the city of Minot. I'm saddened about the comments I'm hearing from people talking behind me about people who are speaking in front of the council. I think that's disrespectful, and I don't think that's how the citizenship should be acting. I am concerned about what we do locally. I'm not concerned about a national political divide that has been going on for the last few years. I want this community, I want Minot to be known as a community that is full of respect. It's full of acceptance. We value diversity here. We have the Minot Air Force Base north of here. We have a college here, all of which includes all kinds of diverse people that need to feel accepted and valued by this community. And what I want, I want that acceptance. I want that to be kindness. And I don't want it to be fake. I don't want us to just treat people like, yeah, you're, you know, we're going to pretend we like you, but really, we're just concerned about our, our people who have lived here forever, right? I am a proud parent of a child in the LGBTQIA+ community. I don't want that child to have to leave the city or this state. I'm also trying to stick as much as I can as close to this particular ordinance. And what I read in this ordinance is language that complies with our North Dakota Human Rights Act, and it complies with federal law. And I don't see anything controversial about the city of Minot adopting an ordinance or a policy that, by the way, is really, it's not a requirement. It's just saying that we're going to consult, as I read it, right? I don't know why there's concern about complying with both North Dakota and federal law in regards to discrimination. You, I can see through the city attorney's report, are having difficulty filling city positions. Not being inclusive, freely discriminating against people. That is a reason why you may not be able to fill some of your city positions. So it asks that you vote against this motion and that you pass the second reading to pass the creation of the Human Relations Committee. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Janet Mathelstedt. I'm a retired ELCA Lutheran pastor here in Minot and have lived here since 1994. And I would be really sad if the city goes on record today again as being officially opposed to LGBTQ concerns, partly from, just from a hospitality aspect. The Minot Air Force Base has always been important to our city. And the Air Force has, has been the benefit of many gifts of LGBTQ persons. And so when people are, are assigned to Minot and they already think it's cold and they don't want to come here, and then when we have our policies that seem to be officially LGBTQ, it gives just one more reason why people are opposed to coming here. Same with medical field. We are excited about the new hospital, and yet there's a shortage of medical personnel. And as I hear the, this, this committee that would be revived, I see it as just showing hospitality to all persons of color. We are looking, the Petroleum Council and the, and the Chamber of Commerce are looking at bringing in some Ukrainian refugees here. And so it just is a nice, nice kindness to welcome these people. Doesn't mean that a person who is religiously opposed to LGBTQ, it doesn't mean that, that, you know, you have to become that. It just means showing kindness to the people who are here in the community. And so I hope today that you would not change this language that has been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Charles Tuttle. I'm from Minot here. My background is, I'm actually the guy that did the initial petition to make Minot Group change the city council. I know the Home Rule Charter process, front and back, every, every Home Rule Charter in North Dakota. I'm offended. I'm offended by LGBTQ people thinking that we are discriminating against them. I don't discriminate against them. But I will tell you, I've had probably 30 gay friends in my lifetime in the eighties. And you know where they're all at? They're all dead. We're lying to people about what the real issues are. The CDC numbers say that the active homosexual male's lifespan is 43. They don't die of AIDS. They die of hepatitis. We don't talk about the real things when we have these books that we're giving to our kids at 10 years old. I handed out 100 of these books eight years ago to legislative session. It's called, It's Perfectly Normal. And in that book, it doesn't tell kids that there's health risks. It doesn't tell kids that there's psychological risks.
Mr. Tuttle, can we stay on the topic of the motion?
This is evidently what I've been hearing. I, I wasn't going to even get up and speak. I didn't know this was about LGBTQ. I thought this was about, you know, giving everybody in Minot, okay, equal rights. You know, I'm in front of the, the, I don't know, it was an event at the public park over here for the food vendors. I'm petitioning over there to change, to stop the landfill from moving next to the hospital. I was threatened by the Minot Police Department with arrest for doing what my constitutional right to redress my government allows me. Now that, I would hope this would cover. I would hope that that's what we're talking about. I don't know why we're talking about this LGBTQ stuff with this issue. If that's what this issue's about, then you need to defeat it. Because everyone should have equal rights, because they're inalienable and granted to us by God in this country, not because I'm LGBTQ. Maybe I'm Italian. I shouldn't be discriminated against because I'm Italian. This, this is all just smoke and mirrors. And everybody keeps thrusting this stuff onto our children and onto our, onto our society, and we don't need to. We are an accepting society. I've, I've been here 12 years. I've never seen people discriminated against because of their sexual orientation. Never. And I know people at Walmart who are pansexual, who are bisexual. It, it doesn't matter. It has no place in government. It has no place here at all. Everybody should be treated equally, period. That's what I have to say about it. And I'm sick of hearing people trying to victimize themselves because I may not agree with their lifestyle. But I'm not going to be immorally dis- you know, whatever. You don't hate people for those reasons, and I don't think Minot does. And I'm offended when I hear people say that Minot does. I'm offended by that. Thank you, folks.
We've actually extended our time. This will be the last speaker.
Okay, my name is Sherry Armbrust. I'm originally from, I'm a Valley girl. I'm from the Red River Valley area, Grand Forks, you know, that area. I moved here in 1997 as a, as a widow with one small daughter. Again, I think we're avoiding the elephant in the room. What Lisa Olson and Mark Janzer was just saying, that this has come up too quickly. It, obviously enough people haven't been able to voice their opinion on it. Why can't we table this and, and look at it at another time when more people have had a chance to voice their concerns? I would agree. I came here as a single divorced woman. You don't think I'm discriminated against everywhere? Is that what we want to focus on? Me? In my little problem? No, it's my responsibility to reach out to community, to get involved, to care about people. I don't have to become a victim. No one does. And if the statute already is there that we're a diverse and accepting city, why do we have to keep updating that? Either it's true or it's not. And by the policies that we vote in, we will show how acceptable and diverse we are. And I would hope that with having a brand-new hospital that employs all kinds of people, with having a university that accepts all kinds of people, how can we not, in a military base right by us, how can we not be a diverse and accepting community? That's a given. I think we're avoiding the elephant in the room. We shouldn't just be discussing one group that's been maybe marginalized on their own at some point in their life. I think we need to accept responsibility for who we are and, and quit claiming victimhood. And I would just think that we should be able to table this and allow more people to voice their opinion, not just one community, the LGBTQ or whatever it is. I really don't care to know what you're doing in your bedroom. That's none of my business. What is my business is if I'm paying tax dollars to support organizations and functions in this city, I have a right to make my opinion known, and so does everyone else. And we should all do it with a respectful, loving concern for our fellow man. And so I will end. Thank you for your time. And I'm, you know, I'm 74 years old. I've had, I've worked with gay people. I've worked with every kind of person you can name. When you're a med tech and you're drawing blood, I mean, who don't you serve? And I don't really see this discrimination that everyone's talking about. I'm sorry. And I came from the Grand Forks area. I was trained in Falls Church, Virginia. I've, I've been a few places. And to me, Minot, for a little town, it's pretty amazing. And I think you all should be proud of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Lisa.
I'd certainly like to respond to some of the comments that have been made. And just to clarify again, the motion does not delete the current ordinance. The current ordinance reads, "The Human Relations Commission," or Committee, excuse me, "is established by the authority of the City Council of City Minot. The Human Rights Relations Committee shall be responsible for promoting communication between all parties, leading to equal opportunity and treatment for all persons, regardless of race, color, religion, national origin, or sex, and to establish a better quality of life for all citizens." I think that's very encompassing. And if it's not accurate, if it's not inclusive enough, I think if this committee were stood up and we had the opportunity to continue this conversation, we probably would have what most people feel is acceptable as far as wording in the ordinance to come before us, and we would be able to take an informed action on it. None of my intent in this is to not hear the voice of, of anyone in this room. This is absolutely not a non-LGBTQ type of, of motion. That's, that's not the intent of it. The intent is to get it right. And right now, I think what we have works well enough. And I think if we want to improve it, we need to have that committee give that recommendation to us.
Thank you. We've already-
I've been standing here the whole time. And this is the major concerns committee, and I appreciate it to be making the testimony that-
Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, city council members. My name's Jasad Stewart. Some of you already know who I am. I'm a member, or I live here in town in Minot. So, that being said, I've heard on my way here, a lot of pulling on heartstrings that the concerns, some of us with a Judeo-Christian background, that we're a bunch of haters of LGBTQ. This is not true. It's the fact that when we're talking about ideals here, what the LGBTQ people stand for, a lot of times, I've been out to the abortion mills in Fargo, they're the ones who are leading babies to be butchered. Their community, there are loving people in there, but their actions, what it leads to is a society that heralds the mutilation of children. And we can, you know, we've heard earlier, theocracy. Oh, we don't want your theocracy on us Christians. No one's neutral. Everyone has a form of theocracy, whether it's government's your ultimate standard or it's God's law. Now, I would, I mean, if we had time, we could go through government standards on morality and I can give you the law of God and we could go through all that. But at the end of the day, thou shall not murder, thou shall not commit adultery. We can extrapolate general equity principles from the Torah. I guarantee you, a society that upholds those, not only is a benefit and blessing for all people, including LGBTQ people, if they would just submit to, to Christ, but also to children, et cetera. So whatever skin color, the Bible does not look at distinctions of skin color. It's based on your believer or non-believer. And you can live in a society that upholds just laws, don't murder, don't steal, et cetera. So anyways, no one's neutral, though, on the theocracy issue. The hate that we're being accused of, I'm, I would gladly, and I have, gone and talked and reasoned with LGBTQ people on these things. And there is no foundation that can justify, well, there's no coherent foundation in a worldview that rejects God and says, the mob gets to decide what is good for society. The mob has said, oh, let's go kill Jews in Nazi Germany. The mob has said, hey, let's have slaves here in America. If we go off like mob rule, that's a very bad way to go. I think the ordinances were fine as they were. There's enough give there to have non-Christians engaging with Christians. And so I would plead with the council, don't go down this trail. We see where it's going. And it, it leads to death. The, the man who, who rejects wisdom, which I think wisdom would say, let's not go this way, it's gonna lead to death. And I don't, I don't want, don't twist that to mean like, oh, so Christians are gonna kill LGBTQ. No. In fact, the other, I've experienced more hatred from the LGBTQ, trying to reason in love on them and try to get good laws in the land that don't bring curses to our land. You see this hospital shortage of staff, it's because we've been rejecting God. We have been rejecting Him. We, we've, we're seeing the decadence, not just in Minot, but throughout our nation. So with that being said, I hope that the city council would consider the great concern that I have for allowing a vehicle for the LGBTQ community to push more their ideals, making all of society have to bend their worldview around theirs. And I'd say that what we have so far is pretty fair and we have some reforming to do, but having to conform around their gender identities, changing my language and, and teaching my children, you, you gotta walk on eggshells around gender and, and naming people and it's called hate crime. No, it's not. And so that is what I have to say tonight, and I hope that it would be received in love. I mean, I, I didn't have enough time to write something, I just heard this come on, so forgive me, but I'm pleading with you and the LGBTQ community, let's reason together and ignore the apostate churches that have said that this is totally okay for society. It's not to embrace and herald sexual morality. So with that being said, I, I would hope that we repent and you hear this wisdom. And fear the Lord. Thank you.
Travis Zablottney from fourteen twelve, twelve street northwest, sorry. Certainly support council member Olson's motion and her intent and the simple fact that the language there is, is encompassing. And I also, without belaboring a lot, I'm gonna tell you that I support the comments of the last four people that have gotten up here. We're going off in a direction that I don't believe our government has business going in. If we're going to manage all social interactions, where do we, where do we end? Where do we start? Where do we end? Are there boundaries? Yes, there are boundaries. I also want to make a comment in regards to, you know, the, the concern over folks being made to feel unwelcome. I really don't understand that, other than, you know, anytime two people have differing opinions, it's an unwelcome feeling. And that's what we're talking about. And we're all entitled to have our own beliefs, but respect each other at the same time. You're not gonna create a law that changes that. You're not gonna create diversity through forcing people to accept something they don't believe in. And quite honestly, as another said, I don't wanna know what you do in your personal time and space. Don't force it on us. It's being forced on us every turn at this moment, these other beliefs, this other ideology. I can have a conversation with all of you and not need to know that, not need to go down there. That is a personal issue. Thank you.
Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everybody being here for the comments that were made. This is, this is actually a really good thing. Wish we, I hope we have this many people for budget cycle and for the budget process and, and for things like that. I, I have my doubts, which actually does make me sad, that, that we're here to talk about this issue and not the actual issues that make this community great, that make us a better community and what we're going to invest in and what we're gonna, what, what we were tasked to do as elected officials. Some of the comments that I just want to respond to before I kind of give my final direction on this is, some people have talked about, we need to not support this language because we need to protect our children. I want to be very clear that I have four children and it is no one's responsibility to protect them but mine. It is no one's responsibility to protect my children but me. So I don't care what can be exposed in the world. They're gonna be exposed to a number of different things. It's my job as a parent to explain this to them, to help them understand the world because there are different points of view and they need to understand that. There are different people, there are different cultures, there are different beliefs. So again, I don't expect the city to protect my kids, I don't expect the government, I don't expect any of you. That's my job. We talk about being offended by this language. We talk about being offended by other points of view. Good. Good. That's what makes us great. Controlled conflict, controlled conflict is where growth happens. And that's what we're hopefully experiencing now. No matter what side of this issue that you sit on, when you go home, you'll be able to reflect and you'll be able to hopefully have a little bit of understanding, hopefully. Hopefully, we all go home with a little bit more understanding of the other side. Because it comes down to the old adage, things we learned, the things that my kids are learning now, sticks and stones may break my bones, but words will never hurt me. And I want to be clear that these are words. So whatever you believe and you get to the pearly gates and you say, see Saint Pete or you see the boatman and he's gonna take you across the river with your couple of gold coins, whatever you believe, and I've been thinking about my own morality and mortality, excuse me, a lot over the past handful of months. And I, I, I think, I try to do this with my kids, that if I was on my deathbed and I could go back to one moment in my life, and if it was this moment at six twenty-six on May first, would I choose love or would I choose hate? Would I choose judgment or would I choose acceptance and understanding? I have no problem with these words. They're words. They're not forcing us to do anything. They're forcing us to maintain an open heart. However, I do understand we are missing a council member. I do understand the concerns that some people feel that this was forced through, and, and I want to be clear, this was not. There, there was no haste with this issue. It followed the process of the law. It is no one's fault, and I don't mean to pick on anybody, this is, because if I wasn't on council, I probably wouldn't have read the agenda either. I'm just being honest. I got four kids, a business, I've got a lot of other things going on. So I don't blame anybody for not keeping up to date on City of Minot agendas. But this has followed the process. Everyone has had their opportunity to reach out to council members, to come to these council meetings, to come to the last council meeting and hopefully come to the next. So with all of that being said, I want to be receptive to the comments of feeling like they want a little more time to voice their opinions. I would support this tonight. And if the table, if the motion to table this that I'm about to make fails, I will support this. Because when I'm on my deathbed, I want to know that I chose love and I choose acceptance because you know what? What other people do, like, like the last speaker said, it don't affect me. What I do in my house doesn't affect you. Okay? So again, I want to be very clear that I will support this language that was introduced, but I will, at this point, for the consideration of the comments that people would like more time to voice their opinions and discussions, I will make a motion to table to also let Alderman Padraigola have an opportunity to attend and voice his opinions because I would be very interested in his comments on this. So I motion to table.
We have a motion?
I'll second it.
Carrie seconds it.
Not debatable. Not debatable, no. Not debatable.
Mr. Mayor, my only question would be, when is it being tabled until the next meeting?
I would, I would, as long as Alderman Padraigola will be here next meeting, I'll, I'll table it to the second meeting in May.
Is that okay with a second? So we have a motion and a second? Call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Motion to table carries. Let's move on to item number seven, action item seven point one. Request for proposals for copier services citywide. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion by Mark, second by Paul. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to item seven point two, Minot Area Council of the Arts request for Carnegie Building funding. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We got a motion by Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Is there any discussion?
I just, oh.
Go ahead.
I just had a question, maybe for Mr. City Manager, is, I went back to the memo of April twenty twenty-two, when we at first went, and, and so I see there's a, a change in the estimated costs. Can you just explain that?
So there was an analysis conducted by Ackerman Esfold in twenty twenty-two, it was directed by council. The city paid for that assessment to be done. And that assessment came back with several recommendations and cost estimates for needed potential repairs and improvements at the Carnegie Building. So what you have before you tonight is an update and there are some changes in the numbers. The items that still need to be fixed are the same, but the numbers are adjusted for current market costs that are available to us today.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had, Justin.
Justin.
All right. Derek, I believe, has a presentation that he can put up. There we go. Let's see if we can do this. Mayor Ross, members of the council, I am Justin Anderson. I'm the executive director of the Minot Area Council of Arts. I think you've heard that enough times. I'm very pleased to be the first guinea pig to see if somebody else can run a presentation on the new system. So here we go. I have been asked with the updated numbers to give you a brief presentation on what's been going on with Carnegie Center, some of the use, and then highlight some of the critical components that I have recognized as being a priority as far as what needs to happen. There we go. So I'll go in a quick review over the last year, highlight some of the things that have been happening, and then just quickly address some of those problems. I don't need to read this, it's in front of you, basically. In twenty twenty-one, you all agreed that Minot Area Council of the Arts should take over stewardship of the Carnegie Center. And we have enjoyed doing that for the last little over a year and a half. A lot of stuff has been happening over the last year and a half and we've been proud to be a part of it because of all the things that have been happening. And happening, it also highlights some of the issues within the building that need to be addressed. There is my, there we go. Okay. So over the last twelve months, you can see kind of a breakdown of what's been going on between private rentals, civic and non-professional rentals and corporate rentals. We do see a good mix of all of them. You can see in the coming months, we've gotten especially high number of private rentals. We have a large number, number of graduation events happening this month. In fact, on May twentieth, we have three events all in the same day, memorial and two grad parties going back to back, so that's going to be very interesting. We have also been a meeting space for several organizations, both in the city sphere and the nonprofit sphere, as well as corporate meeting space as well. We'll show you a few of the things that have been happening around. We've had some youth events at the Carnegie Center showcasing some of our fine young talent in this, in this great city. You see a picture there of the Minot High Drum Line, as well as the Change of Pace Acapella Singing Group. I'm gonna highlight how pretty that hardwood floor looks in that picture in the upper right, just because we're gonna get a comparison there later. We've also hosted some cultural exchange workshops through our World Fest program that I've been here to talk about. And we've been able to do that with a partnership with some of the teachers over at Central Campus, allowing them to simply cross the street over into the Carnegie Center, not expending any school resources or disrupting school time. We've just been able to maintain their school schedule and run things on their period blocks as is, which has been a great benefit for them and us. We had a holiday tree lighting and open house. You'll notice some strategically placed images of the mayor as part of this process. We've had startup Minot classes and networking events, some live music and collaborative arts events, again, some strategic imaging of the mayor involved in some of our events here. We also have a certified pollinator garden in front of the Carnegie Center now, thanks to the NDSU Master Gardeners Program. Last June, they held a public planting event and we have that in the front of the building that's really made it look very nice and is a good addition to our, our city. As was stated in April of twenty twenty-two, Ackerman Esfold Engineering provided an assessment of the Carnegie, Carnegie Center's condition, along with a comprehensive list of needed updates and repairs. These are the lists of repairs. It's a lot. It's not insignificant. There's a lot of stuff on there. And yes, that total value amount is almost three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Not all of it is under strict immediate demand, but it is all stuff that does need to be addressed at some point in time if the building is going to continue to be used. I have identified some basic priorities that need to be done at, the earlier the better. First one, pigeons. That, that pest of the City of Minot that I think everybody has understood and recognized, they are... they are, we are not immune to them. In fact, they are causing quite a, a degree of destruction and mess. There's also an issue of accessibility with the building concerning the street level door and it being ADA compliant, and somebody being able to access the building. And then some issues with the aesthetics and fun, function of the building. Again, I'm referencing that hardwood floor, also window coverings, and some additional chairs for space needs. Starting off with pigeons, that picture on the right, it shows less than 48 hours after the last time I had swept in front of that door. And that is not insignificant. And somebody who is stopping by the Carnegie Center to check it out, maybe wants to rent it, has not arranged with my office to view it yet, just decided to stop by. I have not been there to sweep. This is what they're greeted with, and that's not exactly welcoming in any respect. Also, if you notice, if you look closely on the picture on the left, above that flat surface that's above the door, you see two different colors there, because there's soffit pieces that is missing, that is part of the destruction of the pigeons. That's also an area where the pigeons are roosting and are causing destruction and mess. Access, the west street level entrance is a source of concern for accessibility and safety and security. It is a slab door with a deadbolt. It is proposed that this should be replaced with a panic bar for safety as well as security, and that that little vestibule, which is not large enough for a wheelchair to turn in, should be removed and replaced to allow for true accessibility to the building. Other areas that are not part of the highlighted list, but I want you to take note when it comes to the rest of the assessment. One is bathroom stalls. The current handicap bathroom stalls, we can put in quotes that they are handicap bathroom stalls, because they are not actually wide enough, and they do not actually contain the bars that are necessary for them to be true handicap bathrooms. Also, the elevator, while it is, because it's grandfathered in technically under ADA compliance, it is small, it is cramped, and you can easily get stuck in there. I know I have been. I would hate to have somebody with limited mobility in a wheelchair go into that elevator and try to go up to the second floor and have the accordion door pop open when they are in a position where they cannot resecure it and restart the elevator. That is a safety concern and an accessibility concern. Obviously, an elevator, that's a skyrocketing price right there that nobody wants to consider, but a long-range consideration should be placed on that elevator. Finally, aesthetics and function. If I, I pointed out that beautiful hardwood floor in that earlier picture, this is a close-up of some of that hardwood floor, right in front of the swinging doors just as you come in. It's been replaced and is not very pretty at all. Also, there are various holes and chips. It is uneven. There are gaps between all the boards where sand and dirt and other debris has sifted into and is not easy to clean. This is obviously something that we, we don't want for this to be an aesthetically pleasing building. It is something that needs to be addressed. The other two items that fall under this are functional window coverings. There are a lot of windows in this building, and sun comes in, glares off the floor, glares off other surfaces. It's hard to conduct a building, or a meeting in the building during certain parts of the day when the sun is coming in through those windows. And some of the windows don't have coverings, other windows do have coverings, but they're not accessible from people that are in the building without a ladder. And some of those things do need to be addressed. All in all, what I'm asking for on a priority list is just under $60,000 to address some of these more immediate concerns. Obviously, there are a lot more in the full assessment that do need to be addressed eventually, but this is of a more immediate nature, to get some of these things taken care of so that it is a more welcoming building, it is accessible, and, you know, somebody doesn't have to walk through a mass of pigeon droppings when they come in. I did even have somebody attend a youth advisory committee for the first time. It was her first time entering the building, and she had a little present left on her shoulder while walking into the building, and that's not what we want to greet people with when they come into this building. So that's just a quick update on what we have there. I can certainly answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Paul?
Probably not. Maybe for Harold or Dave. Have we identified a funding source?
I personally have not. We were waiting to see a supportive council beforehand, but I did ask Dave to consider options. I don't know if he's prepared with anything this evening, but we have not, we've been busy moving and some of those kinds of things. So we have not identified a source, but if this is the will of the council, then we will come back with a budget amendment with the sources identified.
Anybody? Mark?
Mr. Mayor, you know, I guess my comment would be that this is a city building, and it has endured previously decades of neglect and not getting updates, not getting regular maintenance. It is an old building. It seems to me that we spent several hundred thousand dollars a few years ago to make sure that the, that the foundation and the cracking that was taking place on one corner of the building got, got repaired. I, I think it's important that we go forward with some of these needed improvements or updates so that this can actually be a viable asset to the community and to downtown. And I, I would applaud the progress that has been made since MACA took over management of it, because I think it's much improved from standing empty most of the time and, and not, not getting any attention. So I'd be in favor of moving forward with at least these priority repairs.
Any other questions? Scott?
All right, Justin, first off, to echo what Mark said a little bit, absolutely. I'm in your facility at least once a month, and it's great to see it being used. I appreciate hearing the, obviously, the improvements to ADA. One thing I would just like to point out, or as a suggestion as you're making these is, obviously, the front entrance, the primary entrance is never going to be accessible. Putting up a sign saying accessible entrance over here, nice entry, because otherwise people are going to show up, not see that side door. And, you know, it's not the most welcoming. I would also say too that, you know, July 26, 1990 is when the Americans with Disabilities Act was signed into law. There isn't actually a grandfathered-in clause. It's a, whether it's an undue hardship, with the city owning this building, we can have a discussion on whether or not it is an undue hardship. But I think that we have got to develop some sort of a plan to make that place fully accessible. The time is, and, and agree with what Mark said too, it was left go for too long. Moving forward, let's just ensure that we don't waste another 33 years before we do something to make it fully accessible. So, but thanks for all your hard work.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Burlingame, I, maybe grandfathered-in wasn't the right term, but I know the architect's assessment deemed that there wasn't any problem with it. It is technically not an elevator. It is a chairlift. So I think that's where that, it falls under a different scope. Their only suggestion on that was to paint it.
Well, and, and again, we've talked about this, and I obviously don't, architecture, the person who did the architectural assessment is smarter than I am, I'm sure, but my, my general point stands of this make it fully accessible, even above and beyond the minimum of law. And elevators and chairlifts and all those kinds of things, as you talk to anybody, it's a pain in the butt in this community. It's hard to get them worked on. It's hard to get parts. So again, it's just a matter of, of, of kind of putting that out in the public and the rest of the council's mind that it's going to be a problem that's going to need to be addressed at some point.
Paul?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, just to follow up on, on what was just said by both Mark and Scott. I'm, I'm, I'm fully supportive of, of making these repairs. The only thing I'd like to see maybe going forward, Justin, is maybe like a, your own CIP, your own capital improvement prod, like, plan for this building. Like, what are you guys thinking? This is what we want to do this year. This is what we're going to do next year. If you guys, just so we don't come back with a funding request, and we kind of know what we're getting into, we can program that or, or, or plan on that, and then if we can, you know, collaborate with some of the programming revenues you guys have, or fundraising, capital fundraising projects you guys do, just so that we kind of know what we're getting into. But I agree that this is, this is what deferred maintenance looks like, and it sucks. So, thank you.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Pittner, if, this is, I've, I've highlighted the immediates for, that I'd like to see done this year, and then, you know, depending on how things proceed, obviously, I can go through, you know, the rest of the assessment to determine, you know, what needs to be done on what kind of schedule. Even the assessment itself does have a few areas that suggest as soon as possible. So others are aesthetic improvements that can certainly wait.
Awesome. Thank you.
Justin, can you talk about, you know, when you took the building over, doing a look back now, are you surpassing what you were hoping for on the revenue side? And then, just as a quick follow-up, I mean, is there any potential for a cost share in this? For instance, we do the building upgrades, maybe the chairs fall on you, since it's not a, you know, a structural.
Sure.
Just talk about that.
As, as far as use, I think it's exceeded my expectations, at least for, out of what I expected out of the first year. It took a few months for it to pick up, but once people started utilizing the building, I think it, it really grew from there. And now we have regular calls for requests, regular appointments for people who want to do a walk-through and perhaps schedule something. Unfortunately, we also get a lot of requests for activities that just would not work in the space. For example, just the layout and size of the building. We can't do a sit-down dinner for 150 people. It's just not going to work. And there have been requests that have wanted that, and I've had to say, this is not going to work. We, we want you to be happy with it, and I just, you would be cramped in there so badly, it, it's not going to function. For some of them, they have altered their plans because they want to use the building, and that's been great. As far as revenue that the Minot Area Council of the Arts has actually received from it, I'm sure you remember that there is a 20% to the city in the lease as it is. What we have left over from the rental of the space, while has been helpful, it's been helpful to offset our costs and time to maintain the building. So the supplies that we have had to purchase, whether it's cleaning supplies, some of the tablecloths, tables and tables that we've purchased, other items that have gone in there, as well as staff time that's utilized to maintain the building, clean up, do switch-arounds for different events that have happened, doing some of that, that setup for those. Our revenue stream, as far as that goes, it's almost a wash. We, we have a little bit left over after our time's taken out, but not by any significant standard. Our primary profit that I would say, out of the use of the building over the last year and a half, has not been a financial profit. It's been an exposure profit. Our ability to utilize the building, some of the programming that we've been able to run. For instance, those workshops with the students at Central has been fantastic, and I think there's some strong use that can continue with that, particularly when the building switches use to a middle school. I think we have some opportunities that we can address there once we get down to it. But it's, it's not been a major financial stream for us, but we've definitely utilized the building and have enjoyed some of that connection. And it does get a different community connection to our organization than we had before.
Thank you. Is there anything else for? Paul?
Just a request from staff. Thank you, Mayor. Can we get what that, what that 20% is that the city takes? And where that, where those funds are, where those funds go that come into the city coffers? What those are utilized for? We don't need it now. I just.
Dave, he, he probably knows the number of what we've pulled in revenue. MACA has fulfilled their obligation. They do pass it on to us. But that revenue goes towards the operational costs. We still pay the utilities, electric, natural gas, you know, those kinds of things. We still have responsibility for a lot of the major maintenance. So they take care of a lot of the day-to-day, cleaning, sweeping, mowing, snow removal, those kinds of things. But if anything goes wrong with the HVAC system or something like that, it's us that have to come fix that and pay for that. So we're still subsidizing the operation of the Carnegie Building to a significant amount, but Dave can tell you what the revenue to date is so far.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the amount that we've collected for the commission in 2022 and year to date in 2023 is $2,355.20.
Thank you, Dave. Mark?
David, do you happen to know what the overhead expenses are on the other side?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't have those numbers off the top of my head, but I don't think this would cover the utility costs.
Gotcha. Okay.
Anything else? Okay, now, we do have the motion is just to consider the funding request. Is that a move? I think we got Scott made the motion. Are you, are you?
That was the motion that you were looking for, right, Harold, to decide if we, if you move forward?
Yeah, staff's looking for direction from council on whether you're supportive of us paying this. There were some other alternatives in there, whether you want to do a private-public partnership campaign of having some of the community help pay for this, or the city's fully paying for it, et cetera. I do believe that that type of approach would probably make more sense with some of the more expensive, long-term issues versus what's being asked for tonight with the $59,000. But that, that was the direction that staff was looking for from council of, given the amount of financial commitment we already make to it, how much more are you willing to continue to do?
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I guess I, I would move to amend the motion to go forward with the $60,000 in, in funding to take care of the immediate issues as were presented and, and with the intent that the other possibilities for fundraising and so forth be, be pursued beyond that.
Is there a second? Second. We have an amended motion by Mark, seconded by Paul. Any further discussion? Paul?
I, I think that's a great idea. I think, I, I'm fully supportive of that. And I think going forward, I think it just further solidifies the partnership that the city and, and the Minot Area Council of the Arts has together, and, and moving that project and, and what we can really do when we work together. So again, I appreciate these items. They're, they need to be done. It's deferred maintenance. It's just going to get worse and more expensive. So appreciate these items being brought forward.
Any other discussion?
Can the city clerk read the, the amended motion before we vote?
The first vote will be just to approve the amending of the motion, but then the, the motion will be, if approved, to amend would be to fund the $60,000 on the priority list for 2023.
Okay, if there's nothing else, so we'll take a vote on the amended motion. Call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
I'm moving on to
Thank you.
the main motion, as amended. Is there any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Thank you, Justin. It's moving on to item 7.3 on the agenda, and that's the Capital Improvement Plan Approval. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We got a motion by Carrie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Discussion. Are you here to answer questions, Lance, or are you?
Here to answer questions and then remind the council if, if you wanted projects added, removed, adjusted, just to include that in your motion, please. So our direction to staff is clear on how you want the CIP to, to read.
Mark?
I, I guess it was, it was my intention to, if we pass this motion, then we can make additions as individually, rather than putting several in this motion and then having to figure out how we get our way through that.
So I'll defer to Steph on this one. Can we just make the motion to approve, then follow up with subsequent motions to add projects? Or do we have to add those as amendments?
Rephrase the question one more time?
So if we wanted to add a project to the CIP, would that be an amendment to this motion? To approve the CIP, which is the motion that's on the floor right now?
I would make the amendment now.
I would make the amendment now. Yeah.
Okay, okay. So are there, is there any further discussion? Paul?
Is wayfinding signage in this CIP?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, Pittner does not.
It is not. Then I guess I would provide that amendment to include the wayfinding signage to continue that project that we committed to last year into the CIP.
Let's second that.
We have a motion to amend by Paul, seconded by Carrie. Any discussion? Mark?
Just for clarification, that would be phase two of three phases. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Harold?
If I may recommend to the council, I would recommend that you add both phases into the CIP. So council, previous action approved phase one, which is currently underway. If I understand the current motion now, it's to add phase two in. I would also encourage that phase three be added into the next fiscal year, which would be 2025.
Okay. Is that okay with the motion maker in the second?
Just, just to clarify why I would, I would think that that should be, it was a commitment we made last year. I understood we wanted to kind of take the first two years maybe and then kind of see where it goes. But I think having it in, it's easier to pull something out, I think, than, than to add it in after the fact. It doesn't get left on the cutting room floor. We don't overlook it next year. So that was the purpose of adding that to the motion.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Lisa?
Just so that I'm straight on this too, as we're adding these amendments in, are the sidewalk projects included in the CIP?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, or Alderwoman Olson, they are not. So we'd have to add them individually.
Okay, so if we choose to do that, that will come after we vote on the wayfinder?
Yeah, yeah, it would be a separate, separate amendment. So we have an amendment on the floor right now that
All right, thank you.
we have to, we have to take care of that. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Okay, that amendment is now attached to the main CIP approval. Are there any further amendments? Lisa?
I would move approval on adding the 21st Avenue Northwest sidewalk project.
Second.
There's a motion by Lisa, second by Mark. Is there any discussion?
Are we still, so that was one that we were going to enter discussions in with parks and schools?
That's correct.
And is that still occurring?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, if we have approval through the CIP process, then as we would develop the project, we'd sit down with Minot Park District and the Minot Public Schools and, and work through those details. I think right now the commitment was if, if everyone thinks this is a good idea, then we can develop that project further.
Right.
Harold?
Maybe helpful for staff as well that as part of the motion, if you clarify what year of the CIP you would like this added in. So are we adding this to 2024, 2025, 26, beyond? That helps staff have some understanding of expectations of how quickly you want us to find the funding to do these types of projects. So it's great that we're putting in the CIP, but we need clearer direction from the council of it's a multi-year CIP. So how soon are the expectations of the council to staff to build these into the budget?
Lisa, you made the motion.
Well, pardon me, because I don't remember the, the exact year. I, I'm following the city engineer's recommendations. I believe it was 2024, but I, I would, I'd stand corrected if, if my year is wrong.
So Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Olson, we would design the project in '24, and that would allow us time to work through the details with the park district and the school district and their budgets, and then construct the project in '25.
Okay, so that would be my motion.
And that's okay with the second?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So just to be clear, I mean, so people understand, is we're not putting it funded into the CIP. It's being put in there with negotiations continuing on because it is a very ripe project to partner with schools and parks on because of the location. Correct?
Mr. Mayor and, and Alderwoman Evans, the engineering dollars would be recommended, which is about $60,000, would, would go into the '24 budget. We'd work with finance and include that. And then so when the, when the budget ordinances come before you this fall, you can either include those or, or not.
Right. But it's not funding the project per se. It's the beginning of the stages of that. Thank you.
Any other, any further? If not, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Okay, are there any further amendments to the CIP?
This would be a question, then, are Sunset Boulevard part of this, or that would be a separate conversation?
It is separate, if I may, just for simplicity. So you still have another sidewalk project that city engineer presented to the council at the last council meeting. That is not in the CIP currently unless the council amends to include it. And at the last council meeting, there were some questions and concerns with regards to the Sunset Street project that is not currently in the CIP, although we did provide you some staff estimates with regards to that. There's also some conversation with regards to the Ann Street Bridge at the last council meeting. And that's in the CIP, but there is no funding identified for that project as of now. So any of those, if the council wants to bring those up in priority within the CIP, now would be the time to make the amendments for staff so we can prepare the budget that you'll be discussing later this summer.
Lance, just so I don't have to scroll.
Go ahead, Carrie.
Can you remind us of this, the, the second sidewalk project?
Mr. Mayor and Alderwoman Evans, that was sidewalk improvements on 16th Avenue Southwest from the about 12th Street West to 16th Street. And our recommendation at the time, while it's a good project, it should probably wait until we urbanize that portion of 16th Avenue, because it's a rural section and trying to get the sidewalks and everything to, to balance in our street section would be difficult. So I would suggest wait, but it's a good project for somebody in the future.
Okay, I like that recommendation. Yep.
Any other amendments to be attached? If not, let's move to the main amendment or the main motion as amended. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes. Moving on to item eight. Thank you, Lance. Moving on to item eight on the agenda, and that's personal appearances. This is an opportunity for those who want to address the council. Now is your opportunity to step up to the podium. If not, let's move on to item number nine. That's miscellaneous and discussion items. Is there anything to be brought before the council? Anything? Okay. That leads us to item number 10, and that's adjournment. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.